Westmont Villages Board Meeting of March 24, 2022 at 6:00 PM. And ask Clerk Simmsky, roll call please.
Mayor Gunther?
Here.
The clerks here, Trustee Barker?
Here.
Trustee Brady?
Here.
Trustee Guzzo?
Here.
Trustee Little?
Here.
Trustee Nero?
Here.
Trustee Simonovic?
Here.
Attorney Zemanek?
Here.
Village Manager May?
Here.
And Assistant Village Manager Parker?
Here.
Everybody please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone. Open forum is the next item on the agenda. If no one's here, if that would be an opportunity for someone to address the board if an item was not on the agenda, so I'll close that and move on to reports. My reports first, my condolences to the Sweetech family. They've been involved for years between Alliance Club, J.C.'s, and EMA. John, the father of Dave and Chris, passed away and he was a very community-minded volunteer for everything, so I just want to pass along our sympathy to the family. On a great note, we want to congratulate Westmont High School's classic bowl team. Their team recently competed in the state tournament and has the highest placing of any public school in the state and took second in their division of private school. Westmont now moves on to compete in the Nationals to defend their current status as national champions. And again, we want to wish them good luck. Last year, we hosted them here and they won Nationals, so we're hoping they could be repeat. And congratulations to Public Works, they received the Water Ambassador Gold Award. Director Mike Ramsey and the Public Works Department for receiving this gold award from the Illinois Section American Water Works Association, so congratulations. And that's all I have, I turn to Clerk Simmsky.
Thank you. Village offices will be closed April 15th for Good Friday. The recycling and garbage pickup schedule will not be affected. And the Westmont Community Awards Dinner has been scheduled for Thursday, April 28th at the Hilton Hotel. Please RSVP by April 20th at westmontchamber.com. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Move over to Trustee Nero.
Thank you Mayor, just a few updates tonight. Before this meeting, we had our Public Works Committee meeting, so just a quick recap on that. We did have a quick public comment regarding Lake Charles and the Oakwood subdivision, so we'll look forward to seeing what that digs up. But first and foremost, we also had a, I think two great 20-year plaque presentations for two good employees, John Yader and Melissa Brendel, so we thank them for their continued service and the many years that they've had been here with the village. And also announced our Public Works Service Award presentation. Mike presented Rose Gross with our annual award for the Public Works Service Award of the Year. So congratulation to Rose. We also learned that Rose really is the one who runs the Public Works Department and makes everybody look good, so thanks Rose for that. We appreciate all your continued support and service to the community. And let's see, moving into a quick update, in addition to a few things I'll mention here, we did also have a 2021 year-end report presentation. So if anybody in the community is interested, a ton of updates and also some things to look forward to this year. It will be available online on our website, so please check it out. And we got a few project updates. Our Lincoln Parking Lot is expected to be done by May, mid-May, weather pending, so glad to hear that. 61st and Cumner is, you know, with the help of a county stormwater grant, looks like that is finally underway, which has been a long-needed project, so was glad to hear that. And then just a few little updates, I didn't realize this, but we actually had 32 inches of snow this year and the village used just over 1,035 tons of road salt. It may sound like a lot, but when you compare it to a similar-sized community, we're actually using a lot less, which is nice to hear. And our friends at Safe Step are working in Farmingdale, grinding down 375 trip hazards. So I know we always like using those, that firm, they do a great job in the community, really improving the sidewalks. And again, check out the annual report on the website, it's a lot of good information. Adopt a planter program is now live, we're doing a few more planters this year because of the interest we got last year, so please check our website out. There is still a few planters left for any resident or interested person to adopt, it does begin in May. And we are doing the tree seedling giveaway, you can sign up online for free tree seedlings to be picked up on Arbor Day, so glad to see us doing that again. Composting yard waste and brush pickup, these programs all resume April 4th, so you can sign up for the composting program via the village website. And the big one everybody's been waiting for is free leaf pickup. There will be a free leaf pickup from April 11th through 15th. This program is for leaves only and is not for regular yard waste. Leaves must be in a kraft paper bag for this program. Bags of leaves will not require a yard waste sticker during this week. Put on leaves with your garb, put out the leaves with your garbage on your usual pickup day. Waste management usually makes that pretty easy, so we appreciate them helping us with that. And last but not least, just some flooding tips. The village has recently published a stormwater management program update along with some flooding prevention tips for the residents. Please check out the village website. And that is all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. To Trustee Little.
Thank you Mayor. The village is accepting applications for multiple positions, including a full-time street maintenance worker in our Public Works Department. Anybody that's interested, please visit the Employment Opportunities section of the village website for details. Our water bill collections will be resumed on past due water bill accounts. Citizens are encouraged to pay their water bills in full in order to avoid shut-offs and/or fees. Our St. Patty's Day Pub Tour was a huge success, we had eight Westmont businesses that participated and everyone involved had a great time. The next pub tour will be April 30th, Drink O'De Mayo, from 2 to 6 on Saturday. Register online at westmontevents.com. And we do have a new utility billing system and I'd like to introduce Assistant Village Manager Parker to present that information.
So just want to let all the residents and utility billing customers know that, as Trustee Little mentioned, we do have a new utility billing system. It is now live on the new system, and so the next set of bills that customers get will be on the new system. So half our town will get bills at the end of March, the other half will get them the end of April. So for those that get their bills at the end of March, take a look at the new bill, it's a little bit different format. And there are two key pieces of information on there, one's the account number, one is the customer number. The account number will look pretty familiar to you, the customer ID number is a totally new thing on the new system. And when you go onto the website and create an account, then you'll be able to link to your account, but you'll need those two pieces of information to do that link. For those that just process it through their bank and have online bill pay, they'll probably want to make sure both numbers are listed on their account number so that we can apply it and make sure it gets applied to the right account. So keep an eye out for those new bills as they come out and take a look at the website for additional information on how to use the new system.
Thank you.
And that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Trustee Barker.
Thank you Mayor. First of all, the next Environmental Improvement Committee meeting is April 4th at 5:30 here in Village Hall. And I wanted to bring to your attention that the Soul Smart Certification, on March 17th, Westmont was one of 10 Illinois communities recognized for receiving the Soul Smart designation, which is awarded to communities that have made a significant commitment to assuring that solar power is a viable energy option for residents and businesses. And I wanted to thank the staff for all their work, several departments were involved in making, you know, taking the final steps to get that done. And we also have the popular No Motill Mother's Day Program, and the signs are going to start showing up in yards very soon. And that's in place, you can get additional information at the village website. And then the EIC, the last thing I wanted to promote was the special recycling event. Again Mayor, this was the staff that reached out to the county this time and partnered with a company called E-Works. That event is April 16th from 8 to noon at our Public Works facility. And it's, you know, it's important to, for the environmental improvement, to encourage people to take things and keep them out of the landfills, if we can do that. So this E-Works program, they're able to take computers and TV monitors for a fee, just like anywhere else now, if you have to get rid of that stuff, you can't put it in your trash, you can't put it in a landfill, but there's a slight fee for that. But there's free things that go along with the electronics, which are desktop and laptop computers, mice, keyboards, modems, cable boxes, converter boxes, satellite receivers, telephones, mobile devices, and on and on and on, cables and all that stuff, DVD players, those kind of things, they're able to have a connection to recycle that stuff, so it's not wasted anymore. They have, you know, there's money to be made with companies collecting it, so we ask you to use that. Also, the Public Works Department will have the bulb smasher out there for anybody that has old light bulbs that they need to dispose of properly. Again, you don't put them in your trash, you get rid of these in a responsible way, bring those to those event, the Public Works crew is great in helping with that. They have a source for textiles, drapes, linens, sheet towels, and other materials, so there's a, you know, again, it doesn't have to go in a landfill. Clothing, shoes, books, magazines, papers, cardboard, and there's more information in detail on the village website and also on the E-Works website through the county. And that's the goal, you know, that's one of the major goals of the Environmental Improvement Committee, is to keep things out of the landfill that don't need to go there. And then also Mayor, we had, on Monday evening, we had our Westmont First meeting and we had perfect attendance there, but we had a new topic, which was an assignment to look into a community-wide mural program, you know, focusing on this central business district. There was just, we had talked about it a few years ago, COVID hit and everything got put on the back burner, but it was very well-received across the entire committee. And Larry did a real nice Communications Department, Larry McIntyre did a real nice presentation about that program and brought some resources in so that we're up to speed. And our next meeting is April 18th at 6:00 PM, where we'll look at actual guidelines and review those to see what we can put together for a program to actually see this stuff happen in our community, should people want to do it. At least we have that option available then. But more to come, but it was a good meeting and very well-received. That is all, thank you.
Thank you. We'll move over to this side, turn to Trustee Brady.
Thank you Mayor. The Planning and Zoning Commission will meet on April 13th at 7:00 PM. They have three items on their schedule. One is review the proposal of the duplex scheduled at 413 North Cass and review proposed automobile uses, including automobile repair at 725 Pascunelli Drive. And also review the proposed zoning for firearm sales and firearm uses in the village. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Trustee Johanne Guzzo.
Thank you Mr. Mayor. A couple of things this evening, our next Fire Public Safety Committee meeting is going to be June 2nd, 4:30 here at Village Hall, everyone is invited to attend. And the Citizens Fire Academy begins April 5th, runs through May 3rd, it is now in person, and it will be hosted at the Johanneck Fire Station. Anyone interested can sign up on the village website, and that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Simonovic.
Thank you Mayor. I have the shortest one of the evening, I just have the reminder that the Police Public Safety Committee meeting will be on April 21st in this room at 4:30 if anyone would like to attend, thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to items to be removed from the consent agenda. Seeing none, I'd ask Manager May to please read.
Consent agenda this evening starts with Village Board Minutes, Board to consider approving the minutes of the Village Board meeting held March 10, 2022. It's followed by Finance Ordinance Number 23 and the amount, the aggregate amount of We have two purchase orders, first one being DuPage Metropolitan Enforcement Group, or DUMEG, that is $21,320, represents the annual, in this case, the fiscal year '23 participation. And the second one is the purchase orders to DuPage County, $33,043.80, but that is for the DuPage Justice Information System, DOJIS, also for operating and system cost. The two purchase orders equate to $54,363.80. Total of the purchase orders with Finance Ordinance Number 23 is $1,692,165.71. Now we have the One Community Event, it's the USA Luge Tryouts, Board to consider an ordinance approving road closures for the US Olympic Luge Team for their 2020 Slider Search Tryouts. This is on the consent agenda because it's a repeated, not annual in this case, but a, you know, a reoccurring event. The road closure essentially involves South Cass Avenue effectively from 55th Street to Dallas Street. The date of the event is scheduled on June 11th and June 12th, from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM each day. The request is to block off traffic on South Cass in that, in that area for the USA Luge Tryouts. Last on the consent agenda is a proclamation for National Library Week. Board to approve a proclamation declaring April 3rd through 9th, 2022, as National Library Week in the village of Westmont. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Have a motion to approve is read.
Motion to approve is read, Little.
Second, Nero. Motion made, second, any comments, questions? Seeing none, roll call please.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Motion passes, we do not have any unfinished business, I'll turn to new business A, the Mayor's Monarch Butterfly Pledge. Board to consider resolution accepting the Mayor's Monarch Pledge given through the National Wildlife Federation. I'm going to turn to Manager May for additional information.
All right, well, it's named the Mayor's Monarch Pledge, but the, this is a resolution that we have done before and we had, we passed a resolution in support of the Monarch Pledge and we're invited again this year to re-adopt that pledge and the organization is to, you know, make it an, you know, an annual, I don't know, affirmation of that commitment. So it is, and along with the next item are the Environmental Improvement Committee Inspired Activities, and I know there was, Trustee Barker and Trustee Little are, you know, very interested in doing this resolution again, and I didn't know if either of you wanted to add to that. You're so excited, you're, you're very excited.
I'm very excited because I'll be raising them and releasing them again this year, so. I had great success last year, I released 86 monarchs, so very happy.
I just would like to comment that, you know, it's things that Westmont has tried to do and the community has embraced it and it's grown and, you know, Trustee Little is raising monarch butterflies, but then the other people that don't want to do that can take it easy in the springtime, us guys, if we're going out to cut the grass and wait till after Mother's Day to do it. And that actually helps the pollinators that was brought to us by our village forester. We implemented it last year, it was a great success, it's growing to become more popular and we're looking forward to it. I had asked Mr. Yader, the forester, if he's aware of other communities that have adopted this in the county yet, because there's an awful lot of talk about us being a leader in that, in that way. And he isn't, he isn't aware of any that have done it yet, but he's getting a lot of phone calls and conversation about the program, so we've, you know, opened the door here in DuPage County and the EIC is very proud of that.
Good.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm looking for, I need two motions to approve the resolution. We're going to start with the Mayor's Monarch Butterfly Pledge, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Barker.
Motion made, second, any additional questions, comments? Roll call please.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Motion passes, I'm looking again for a motion for the No Motill Mother's Day.
Motion to approve, Barker.
Second, Little.
Motion made, second, comments? Seeing none, roll call please.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic?
Yes.
Motion passes, new business C, a B1 permit, Tamara Salon at 36 South Cass Avenue, Unit 44. Board to consider ordinance approving a B1 development permit for Tamara Makeup and Hair Artistry to operate a beauty salon at 36 South Cass Avenue, Unit 44. Director Sylvester.
Mr. Mayor and trustees, as the mayor just explained, the request is for a B1 permit in our downtown. As you all know, businesses moving into the downtown need a B1 permit. The applicants are with us here tonight, they're proposing a makeup and hair artistry type beauty salon. The only other note I'll add before asking them up to introduce their business briefly is, you may recall that last summer, we approved a special use permit for a salon in the same location. This is an interesting tidbit from the zoning ordinance, special uses run with the land and as long as a use is continuously operated, it can continue to operate. If a use is discontinued and a similar use, or identical use in this instance, moves into that space, the special use is still good as long as that's done within 365 days. So there was a business that was moved in here last summer, unfortunately, the business didn't succeed, and now the space is available again and Tamara is hoping to move into that space. I explain all that because you don't need to go through, and the village has not had to require the applicants to go through the special use process because the previously granted one is still in force. So, do you want to come up?
Hello. I'm Tamara, I'm owner of Tamara Makeup and Hair Artistry. I have been doing makeup for 16 years. And 12 years ago, we brought on hair and we do special occasion hair and makeup, so we work with brides. I put together a little, actually, my husband put together a little PowerPoint for us, so I thought I would show you guys a little bit about our company. Well, there's our team. So this is the lovely ladies who make up our team of Tamara Makeup and Hair Artistry. And our current studio is based in Darien, so this is what we currently work out of. So I just thought it would be nice to show you a little idea of our vibe and our look. I was, I just wanted to bring in some of our reviews. On The Knot, we currently have over 500-plus five-star reviews, and I know you can't read them all in detail, but you can go to thenot.com and read them there. And then, yeah, this is just showing us, we were recently featured in Neboville Magazine, so you can read that article there as well. We've gotten fortunate, just a couple months ago, working with some celebrities, we did Natalie Bonkey from Fox News' wedding, Stephanie March from Law &amp; Order, and some other people. And what we wanted to bring to downtown Westmont is, we need a bigger space, so when we found this space, we thought it would be absolutely perfect. We do per year about 300-plus brides, the brides, their moms, and a lot of maid of honors get a preview for their weddings, so they come in and they do a trial. And we think this space would be perfect, I think it would be a great addition to downtown Westmont because usually when they come in, they're not only bringing these people in, but they bring a friend or two, they go to eat, so right now in Darien, they're going to Chuck's all the time, so maybe they'll hit up Neat here. And, you know, they're going to bakeries, coffee shops, things like that, and making a day of it. So we think it would be a really great addition. And then my husband did a little Photoshop to show what our signage would look like in that space. So that's a little bit about us and hopefully you guys think we'd be a great addition too.
If they didn't like Chuck's, they're a block from our, from a place that's even better, Uncle Bob's.
Right, yeah, exactly, so now I can refer to their things.
It's right down the street, so they'll love that. Do you have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion to approve, Nero?
Second.
Second, comments? Go ahead, nope, anybody got comments, question?
This is a second location, did you say, or are you relocating?
Relocating.
Right now you're in Darien.
Yeah, yeah, just need a bigger spot.
Well, you upgraded, so good, good choice coming to Westmont, thank you.
Yeah, and we won't go out of business like the last one.
I need a roll call, please.
Did I get a motion?
Didn't I?
I did, I'm sorry. Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Congratulations, we look forward to the grand opening with Larry Forsberg, make sure you get in touch with him. That motion passes. New business D, Fifth Third Bank Operations Center on 910 Pascunelli Drive. Board to consider ordinance approving request from BHDP Architecture and Fifth Third Bank regarding the property located at 910 Pascunelli Drive for the following. One, variance to reduce the number of required off-street parking stalls. Two, a variance to permit outdoor lighting in excess of illumination standards. Three, site and landscaping plan. And four, parking stall size waiver. Director Sylvester.
So this item, as was just explained, is a request for several village approvals that are required due to Fifth Third Bank's plans to renovate a building that's currently vacant along Pascunelli and update it, invest in it, and convert it into their operations center, which is sort of a back-of-the-house type of operation. This will not be a customer retail store or location where people can come in and do their banking, this is more back-of-the-house. In order to accomplish some of the things they're hoping to do with the building, they need to put on a small addition, put in some fencing, and put in some security lighting, and that's triggered the requirement for the variances and the site and landscape plan approval that's before you tonight. This did go through Planning and Zoning, they give a very thorough and well-done presentation about their proposal and the justifications for the various variances and approvals that they're requesting, and Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to approve all of their, or to recommend approval of all of their requests. There are a couple of representatives here from the bank tonight, if you have any questions or want to have them provide any additional information.
Come up and answer maybe a question or additional information if they would. Trustee Brady had a question.
I have one, because I went over reviews earlier today, really well-done, it's a nice area on Pascunelli Drive, it's a good area. I just have one personal comment, it's not part of the ordinance, but it'd be nice to have a flagpole there with the flag of the United States of America in front of the building, just my personal opinion. Okay, other than that, good, thank you.
Trustee Brady, thank you for that comment.
Take it, so take it.
And for the record, Lenny Osoro, legal counsel from Fager, Drinker, Biddle &amp; Reed on behalf of Fifth Third Bank. And before you today are Patricia McClellan, Vice President and Project Leader from Fifth Third Bank, Randall Morrissey, Vice President and Real Estate Manager from Fifth Third Bank, Chris Keppner is a PE, Erickson Engineering Associates, Samantha Kelly, Lead AP, NCIDQ from BHDP Architecture, and is Jeremy here? Sorry, sorry Jeremy, and Jeremy McDoll, Project Manager from CBRE. And so that's us for the record, and so I would ask Ms. McClellan if she wants to answer that question.
Sure.
Come on, yeah, the microphone.
I can't answer it directly, but I will definitely take that back and make the request. I like it.
Army veteran, he's.
Yes, my husband's Navy, so I understand.
Mayor, I got two.
Yes, go ahead, Trustee Barker.
I have two questions. So the, I want to thank Planning and Zoning for the job that they did, you know, one of the variances, I'm the Chairman of the Environmental Improvement Committee, so one of the variances was the lighting levels there, and it exceeds our standard. Is this a 24/7 operation or does it have hours?
It is a 24/7.
It is 24/7?
Yes.
Okay, so then the need for the additional lighting is important, and then I would say if you ever have an opportunity to turn some of your lighting down, please do so, other than that, we welcome you.
Thank you.
I can just add that, I mean, we are upgrading the
Just to add that, I mean, we are upgrading the lighting, you know, to what it is, what it previously was, and those fixtures will be also on dimmers. So if there's no activity in the lot, they will dim down to, I think, 30%.
Thank you. I'll take that back to the committee. That wasn't at P&amp;Z? That it was at a dimmer?
I think I had that in my back pocket.
You gave me something. Thank you.
Any other comments? Anybody? I need a motion to approve. Motion to approve.
Trustee Guzzo.
Motion made second. Any other comments? If not, roll call, please.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Motion passes. So when, when is all this starting?
Tomorrow?
Tonight.
I have the drawings submitted tomorrow.
Okay. Good.
Thank you. Great. Yeah. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, new business E, 2022 zoning map. Board to consider ordinance to approve the revised zoning map dated December 31, 2021, as the official 2022 map for the village of Westmont. Director Sylvester.
So this is a housekeeping item. There's a state requirement that every year municipalities in Illinois have to adopt an official map that reflects all changes to zoning districts and all changes to corporate borders, annexations from the previous year. So the map that's being presented tonight and that you're being asked to approve reflects all of the zoning map amendments and the annexations that we completed during 2021.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Simonovic. Second, Little.
Motion made second. Any comments? Again, includes anything we annexed last year, so it's.
Correct.
Yes. Seeing no other questions, roll call, please.
Trustee Simonovic.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business F, surplus property to Westmont Police Department. Board to consider ordinance declare certain equipment as surplus village property. DC Thompson. It's all yours.
I believe that this is just vests, old bulletproof vests that have been expired for years, that have been sitting downstairs in one of our closets. One of the members, or our former chiefs, I believe, from the Illinois Association Chiefs of Police, has some Ukrainian ties through, through a family member. One of the things that he had put out was asked that if anybody had any surplus vests, if we could get them surplus, and then they would be sent over to Ukraine via Poland. I believe that they would go to the actual people who are bringing in supplies from Poland to Ukraine. Even though they're, they're expired, it's obviously better than nothing. So we had got our stuff together, and I believe there was 51 expired vests that we had found around, so we're just looking to make them surplus so they can be.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I have a question, yeah.
Yeah.
I thought you were talking about 55.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second. Nero. Motion made second. Comments?
I just wanted to know what constitutes expiration of a vest?
Um.
At holes, is it?
No. We get these vests, I believe it's, most of them are five years, and I believe just the material degrades a little bit, and that they'll only guarantee them for five years. We've actually taken the vests out to the range after they're expired and shot them, and a normal pistol bullet will not go through them still. So they put a manufacturer's date on there, and it's usually about five years.
But you buy them again.
Yeah, right.
Obviously, you buy them again.
Yeah. Exactly. Got to make money, too. But, yeah, I get, you know, with heat and cold and everything, they're out in the elements. They say, you know, five years is usually the shelf life that you should be getting a new vest. So that's what constitutes expired. It's not that there's anything, per se, wrong with them, but they're just not guaranteed anymore.
Thank you.
Can you share the cost of a vest? I know you brought it up at budget time, but it's expensive.
I, I want to say it's $5-ish thousand. I don't know the exact number, because we did a partial grant maybe for it, but about $5,000, to be fair.
Per vest? Per vest?
Per vest.
Spencer Shaken has said yes.
Yeah, we should have asked him first.
Worth it. Yeah. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes. Motion passes. Any, any miscellaneous, anything anybody wants to mention? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. We do not have an executive session, so. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn, Nero.
Second, Little.
Motion made second to adjourn. Roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
And I want to thank everyone. This meeting is adjourned.